Having returned from executive session. The time is now 4:04 and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in executive session were?
Lust Erwitz.
Mike Phelan.
Aaron Williamson.
Aaron Noble Tree.
Manuel Trillo.
And Frank Schuh, Michael German, Nick Mason. Was that everybody? Okay, good.
For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during executive sessions, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of open law, ask you to state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next agenda item is a conclusion of this special meeting. Is there a motion?
So, look.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The special meeting of city council on Monday, September 9th will come to a close. Next on our agenda is work session with the following items filed for consideration of city council one, Creative District. Michael, who's presenting?
So, um, geez, shall we move? Did you get everything operated?
Shall we move our table?
Shall we?
Sit over there?
Shall we move? Because that's the idea of this, so we can all kind of... Is that going to mess with you?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Just take your stuff.
Not really.
I'm supposed to be up here! So, we'll make this nice and quick and easy. Um, I think all of you already know me. Oh, that's not what I want to give you. Sorry! So, um, my name is Virginia Jimenez, just in case you don't know who I am. I am the treasurer for the Creative District. Unfortunately, my other board members, they all have like rail jobs or something, I don't know. So, they're all... I want to make sure I have enough for these.
Thank you. I can ensure-
Is that everybody? I just want to make sure.
I think so.
Okay, cool. Everybody's got one. And there's, if you guys want to look, I need one for my, just for my notes. So, right now, we have five members on the board. These are the five of us. You might notice that we don't have a president, and that's sort of me at the moment, not officially, but I'm just kind of acting because that's what happens when someone resigns and you don't have a meeting for a while. So, this is, the bulk of my presentation is to show you our new branding and some of the elements of our strategic plan that we received with Matt Ashby. Everything that you will see on these slides is in this little packet I gave you that's yours to keep. It's just in a different format. Did you get one?
I did.
Okay.
I was sure, sorry.
No worries. So, this would be our new logo. So, instead of being Corso Trinidad Creative District, it would be Create Trinidad with our little tagline of a certified Colorado Creative District. And that is like our little slogan, I think is the right word, right? We live to connect the dots between creative pursuits and a vibrant economy. Everything that you are going to see here is, I just pulled straight from our friends at Ayers Associates because that was easiest and I haven't had the material long enough to like play with the colors and make my own presentation. So, um, that means that none of the typos are mine either, so. Yeah, there were a couple of statements here that just kind of get at the gist of what the Creative District should and is going to be doing as we move forward. So, we're a community of innovators reinventing what it takes to be financially sustainable in a changing marketplace. As our local trendsetters focus on refining their diversity of crafts, the Trinidad Creative District is redefining how we support building an economy that values arts of all stripes. We're an organization that prioritizes connection of raw materials with expert hands to mold something magical. We're spotlighters of both innovative and time-tested mediums that contribute to cultural uplifting, and we are harnessing the creativity of our locals to drive a new and prosperous economic future. So, the gist of the Creative District, we are supposed to be economically building our community specifically through creative industries. And as we go, I will talk a little bit about how that is possible. So, here is our new mission statement, which I love. Harnessing the passion of long-timers and newcomers alike, Create Trinidad celebrates our cultural heritage, transforming creative wealth into economic prosperity. And that's really nice and simple because this is a difficult process to create a mission statement. I don't think we want to change it at all from this language because, for contrast, this is currently our mission statement, which is vague and not quite as specific. It's difficult to make a mission statement that isn't at least a little bit vague, right? It's a really challenging thing. So, that is the gist. We want to work with the creative wealth in our community and turn that into economic prosperity for the town, for all of our constituents. Our vision is that we see Trinidad as a place with all of this potential, a workshop, a studio, a stage where artists thrive by connecting as a community and in Trinidad. He's a big fan of starting sentences with "and," I've realized, and I dislike that. Everyone is welcome to unlock their inner artist. As a person who's been here for, like grew up here, moved back, I really appreciate the way that we've worded this because it's really easy to get into like, oh, that's for young kids, oh, that's for seniors, oh, that's for this group of people. And putting it, part of our messaging will be, everyone can be an artist. Here are the ways that we can do that. And these are the places you can go to do that, to figure out how to be your own artist. And our purpose, this is the part I know personally I'm going to have the hardest time with, is to connect. We're the dot connectors between creative pursuits and economy. I myself am an artist, so it's really hard for me not to think about doing art or creating opportunities. Really, what the Creative District should be doing is connecting people, right? It's not my job to make the opportunity for the artists, it's my job to connect those artists to the opportunities. Does that make sense? Does that sound right to you, Aaron? Okay, let me know if I'm way off base because I'm trying to make sure that I wrap my head around it. So, this slide just sort of further, our role is to connect those people, right? To make our arts ecosystem a place where people want to be, but also make sure that it's economy-based as well. So, we step back from creating to supporting innovative and holistic strategies to elevate the economic viability. So, what that might look like is instead of hosting an exhibit for artists, we start hosting workshops that help local, that teach nonprofits how to do things that are necessary for nonprofits. And especially for artistic nonprofits, running a theater is completely different than running a retail store, right? You're not going to have the same challenges at a certain point. And so, being able to talk about those type of things specifically is going to be, is important. And I think that that is just a specific example of the kind of thing that we can do. And this is more of the same. All of this language is on your paper, and I'm not going to continue to read slides at you. But there, these three logos here at the bottom represent the three initiatives that we are going to work to create over the next number of years. The first one is to create by number. And this would be, again, connecting the dots. I have a feeling that's going to be like our mantra. This initiative seeks to develop and deploy strategic communications to all constituents, left and right brain, whatever that means. If you look at the second page of the packet here, these three initiatives are laid out, and here are some specific examples. And while all of the specific examples here underneath the create by number are very focused on communication and communication and building relationships with city, with our economic and creative industries, this is really about, this is when I need my notes. We need to connect people who can help each other out. We want to create symbiotic relationships in the community because those relationships will then move our economy forward, right? You want to make pottery, you don't have a kiln, I know someone who does, let's get you there, right? Even as small as that. And if we do this well, we can create jobs in our creative industries. And also garner support for those things. And I know that Frank Schuh is over here, like, what kind of jobs do artists get? Well, you want to know who makes more money than you, Frank?
Everybody.
Everybody! But, my favorite example for this is technical theater, and I'm picking on you because I can, because you're really good to me and I love you. But, my favorite example of jobs in the arts is technical theater, right? When I went to school for theater, I learned how to build things, I worked in the carpentry shop. I learned how to paint things, I learned how to work with different kinds of paints. So, if someone said, hey, can you help me paint my house, I'd be like, yes, I can do that. The electrical and like the audiovisual technology that those people learn, every person that I went to school with could learn how to solder, they could take these lights apart, put them back together, those are transferable skills into other industries, right? So, actors don't make jack shit, to put it plainly, but if I wanted to go be a technician, work on lights or sound, I'd be able to make all kinds of money. Not here, but, not yet. But, the people who live and work in places like Las Vegas, there's a huge market for jobs like that. So, that's one of my favorite examples of jobs in the creative industry, is tech theater. And there's a whole, you know, there's a whole bunch, but just to be specific. What that can look like, this might be a little tricky to see. We have all of these different places in our community. We have bookstores, we have, I don't know if we have art supply stores or camera stores. We used to have music shops. We do have places where you could do kitchen things. The dance community is probably the longest-lasting thing that we have had in our community, and that's really wonderful. The goal is to like get these things in our community because they're all valid, right? And they're all things that we can do, and they're all transferable skills into other industries. These industries are worth their own time. The other initiative there is Heartbeat. So, this initiative will really seek to elevate community understanding of what the Creative District is and does, and what it means to be part of a certified Creative District. So, we need to identify our audiences and then basically help them understand three things. Well, those audiences would be our government, our donors, the general public, and then the artists and creatives in the community. Because they aren't just artists, they're also business owners and property owners, right? In addition, and so are all of their, all of their patrons. But the things that we want to make sure that the community at large understands is that art is not just a nice-to-have thing. It's an economic generator and sustainer, and we can definitely use it that way. Art is for everyone, that's the second thing we want everyone to understand. You can do it too, Frank, I promise. And then, the third thing we want everyone to understand is the value of our local creatives and how their work impacts our quality of life in this community and also our economic, our economic sustainability, or just generally how they stimulate the economy, right? So, that's what this initiative is about. So, this is very much about communicating and what that looks like. Of course, communicating, these are some terms that we have been given to sort of look over and potentially use. It's nice to have terms and definitions of them, right? Remember when everyone was like, social distancing, and we all were like, what does that mean? You need to tell the people what the thing means if you're going to start using new words, right? Or new terms. So, this is just the list of potential things that we will have. I can also share this entire thing with you so you guys can read through it more clearly. Art Aware, this of course, as an artist, I'm really excited about this initiative. This is just kind of a little bit of what we're already doing. This is introducing programming into our community, continuing what programming we have that exists, hosting exhibits and festivals, and creating content about our creative industries for our community to engage with. Which I think I have, the next thing is about, is an example of that. So, Spotlight Local is something that we probably will start doing. And what this does is that we will pick somebody, pick an industry, pick an artist, and have a little like blog post about them on our website or Facebook posts about like, here's how awesome this person is. Matt and Margie went ahead and put some of these together. I just pulled one so you can see what that might look like. This is a little spotlight about Paula Little, who's a local artist, has been around for a long time. She's lovely, I'm sure you all know her. But this would be the kind of content that we would be putting out to show, like, to create that connection, right? Using a little bit of that like, oh, look at these beautiful people, how wonderful they are, go support them, be their friend, and also, these are the amazing things that they do. No one explained this logo to me, but I really like it, so I just had to share it with you. What I like about this logo, it pulls in the heart that Historic Main Street is using, and it also includes those block letters that they've put together for us. So, I probably, we'll probably just make a bunch of t-shirts with that, that's how I feel about that. And then, we'll also have a little brand that we can share with our creative industries that looks like this. These are just some examples that we can use. Be like a sticker, you know, that you put on, on your Coles pastries, right? These are other options for our logos. And I'm just sharing this with you, this is so cool! And because it's just very colorful and bright and exciting. And I think what I like the most about our color palette is that it incorporates some of the colors of the City of Trinidad logo, right? And also incorporates some of the colors that are being used for the Historic Main Street Board now, right? And what I love about that is that it gives us a unique opportunity of like, a tricky way to communicate to the outside world that we are the same place, right? And just a small way for us to communicate subliminally. We are the same place, and I really like that idea. And it'll make us look cohesive, right? It'll communicate to the rest of the world and the rest of the state that Trinidad, Colorado, has all of these really cool things, and we're all connected in some way. And I think that's all I have.
Bravo.
Yes.
Thanks! How long did it take me? Hey, not that long! That was good.
Is there any kind of questions from anybody?
I have, I've been neck deep in this for years, and so, I'm glad to see that we have this new cohesive message. But I think it's, one thing I'm starting to grasp in terms of working with artists and creative-type individuals is that to an extent, what a creative industry is designed to do is to herd cats and get them all going in the same direction. Trinidad wants to present itself as a city where you're welcome to be who you are and to create who you are and to make a living doing that. And so, what the Creative District is designed to do is to give you what you need to do that. So, if you need technical assistance in terms of how to start a creative business, networking, promotion, so that we'll have somewhere a website that people can go. If you want to know what's going on in the creative world in Trinidad, go to the We Are Create Trinidad website, find out what's going on, so it will be a keeper of events. Not so much being focused on setting up its own events, but there are plenty of other groups that put on events. But there should be a central place that you can find out where an art show is, a writer who's coming to town, a performance that you might want to see. We don't have anything like that, so that's what the Creative District will be doing.
Right, yeah. And the hope is that we'll also be able, one of our initiatives that we've been wanting to do is to create a membership for those artists and creative folks in town, where if they're a member, they will get certain benefits from us, and that would include some advertising. I think as a, one thing we've wanted to do is create a directory, right? If you want to find out who are all the artists that live in town, well, here's all the places to go, who's teaching classes, who is like, who can help with this or that. So, really making sure that the community can find artists, but also that artists can find each other as well. Yeah, and not even, and it doesn't even always have to be artists, like, hey, I want to do this really cool technical thing, but I don't know who can help me put that together, they can hopefully find somebody on our website. And this is not limited to, we're not limited to just visual arts, right? We're not just painters and sculptors and that kind of thing. We should also be promoting people who design websites and people who, like, right, people who cook, people who sing, right? Main Street Live, like all of our performance arts as well, Dance Connection and the other, there's so many facets of art that already exist here. Like, I still can't get over that Dance Connection is literally as older than me, when I think about it. You know? Like, yeah, I know. So, it's, so it's important to do that. And then, you know, if we can promote it in our community, other places won't have as much of a challenge. It won't be so challenging for teachers to promote art in their schools, for example.
So, there's a bunch of grants that Colorado Creative Industries, which is the administrator of the Creative District program in the state, they have a number of grants that people who live here would need to know about and can apply for.
Yeah, and that would be our job to help facilitate that information, definitely. Anything else?
Great job. Yes, very good. Keep on doing it.
I will. Maybe Monday I'll get paid for it, too.
Well, thank you very much. We do appreciate you. Can we, if you want to forward that to Algra, maybe she can see it too?
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I can do that. I can probably download it, like do a PDF version and share it with you.
All right.
No further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
In that case, I guess we're moving on to item two, Strategic Plan, and in keeping with the meeting, are we moving again?
I believe we are.
It's a calisthenic workout, dude.
Get your exercise while you're at a meeting.
Thank you for everyone's flexibility. Yeah. We're trying to make it as difficult as possible. And now, if you're not going to have to let me sit in between, that's a whole plan, isn't it?
We're trying to be flexible.
That's right.
I think I would hear a vent over there.
Oh, yeah.
I need my water cup.
Sorry. They just sent that to all the council members. It was completely unnecessary.
Okay.
That just-
It's the same thing, right?
Yeah, it is. Okay.
How about it? Who's presenting this?
So, I guess I am, but it's kind of a city council thing. So, if you announce the strategic plan implementation. So, I came in, find out that we're doing a strategic plan, and the first meeting, council adopted the strategic plan. So, took it to the department heads and said, okay, there's some dates tied to these things, some goals that need to happen, and some milestones, and so, with a lot of grumbling and like, oh my God, and now we're doing it. It's like, yeah, we're doing it. So, there's some things for council to do.
He sounded very happy.
That was unsettling.
So, we pulled a couple of sections out of the strategic plan that council needs to move on by quarter three, 2024. Exactly. Like I said, two weeks in, it's like, holy cow, those are aggressive dates. But, all in all, I think it's something that can be done. We have to determine our capital improvement project priorities annually, and plus, every five years, we kind of do that now. Create a CIP plan, capital improvement plan. It's in your budgets every year, but we need to, you know, move forward, and departments are going to develop some, some of these timelines and estimates on the projects to move forward with. And then, we're going to schedule a separate budget work session with council to have a summary on the level, so, summary level. And I know that, yeah, I don't know when this was presented, but you had a lot of projects that you got updates on, and I don't know if any of these were CIP projects that are in the works, so I'm working through that. But, all that said, I'd like to get council's feedback on where we're headed with capital improvements and such.
Before we started, I had a question, I think, when, I think it was Steve presented on the strategic plan. I mean, the presentation was the, staff was very excited by it and thought it was going to be cohesive and cause there to be like everyone pulling on the rope to move the cart in the same direction. Is that-
That, no, I, maybe I misspoke. That is the case, but when I looked at it, I saw the dates.
Sure.
Quarter three, it's like, you sent it, that's in a month. So, I called a meeting and I said, hey, you guys all had this plan and you came together to do this. There's some, there's some goals and deadlines here, and then that's when they were like, oh yeah, this is-
The rubber meets the rubber.
Exactly. So, I'm trying to keep the rubber on the road and move forward, and with council, you know, having some responsibilities as well.
Mike?
Yes.
Can we have a work session with Cheryl and everybody, and just separate work session, just that particular deal? Because it's going to take a long time to go through all that.
Yes.
And we don't need to- And we don't need to add all the other stuff to it, but just to sit down, figure where our money is and everything, and I think that would be the best way to tackle that one issue there with the capital constructions.
Yeah, and that's exactly where quarter four is where we have that robust work session with you to go over the budget and line items. So, so I guess with that said, and I don't know if there's any projects, I've been gone two years, I don't know if there's any projects that council wants to move forward, please, you know, get them to me and kind of...
I believe it was Councilwoman Williamson that had asked for that to be something that, as they were checked off, they came off the list, like a new updated list.
So, correct. And Audra has put together kind of a calendar, she's gone through the whole strategic plan and kind of, and this is kind of part of it, we'll get that to you, but it's in the works.
Is there, I'm sure there is, and just the best way to share it, I'm not sure what that would be. I always lean towards spreadsheets myself, but not everybody does. Is there one source that has a list of every capital improvement plan right now that we could easily view?
I don't know if this is, this is the...
We'll have to go through there and mark what's actually in the CIP plan.
Okay, because, I mean, that would be a good place to start and then take what you said and talk about funding and then prioritize and bring everything together and put it both...
Broken up in quarters?
Yep. But to your, was that...
And then broken up in quarters.
No, not the CIP.
Well, no, prioritized.
Okay.
To Councilman Chu's point, if we want to be honest with ourselves, and I'm sure certainly do, I mean, that's the 23rd work session, right? That's the only way we're meeting Q1.
Right, well...
On Q3.
Q3. I, not being part of this, I'm going to say some of these are going to have to be a little flexible as we work through. But budget is coming online, it's part of our charter to have the strategic plan, the, not the strategic plan, the CIP projects for four years plus one. And so this is kind of putting it all together.
I mean, and to that end, the strategic plans to some degree have to be a living document.
Exactly.
If, if we modify a deadline, we just have to ensure we're not modifying every deadline.
No, no, exactly. These are some goals and exactly why we're here is like, hey, these are, these are upon us, so let's move forward with it. Council has adopted this, so...
Well, and when these were adopted, Steve was still the same manager and we did not understand that he was not going to be here. So I think we have to build into this a little flex around that so that you can get up to speed and I just don't want things to get lost in the process.
Right.
Absolutely, we should be flexible in timing.
I mean, I don't think I'm wrong when I say his endorsement of it was like 100% absolute and complete excitement about it. So I do think it's going to provide a lot of benefit. We just need to get our arms wrapped around it.
It was a strong endorsement.
It was a strong endorsement.
City manager, it was. Yes, sir. So the next page has, the main objective is the city's crime rate will be equal to or lower than the national average. There's a little bit of a typo here, it's quarter three, 2025 up top, that's 2024.
Oh, well, that's different.
So by quarter 2024, quarter three of 2024, council's supposed to do ride-alongs with the PV.
Or we're supposed to be invited to do it.
Hey, I want to do a ride-along now. Right now, so just so you know, I think Inter Chief Tahanovic mentioned to you that you just need a call, you go in, you have to sign the kind of a release, and then you're out, he'll have you riding along, so...
I did one years ago and it is, it is eye-opening.
I did mine a few months ago.
Are you saying you do this?
I'm going to do another one.
Okay.
Where are we on the police chief application deals?
So we have received, I don't, nine proposals for, from the firms, the search firms.
When does that end? I mean, when is the deadline for...
It's done. So our proposals are in-house, we receive them Friday, we'll go through them, we'll bring them forward, we'll pick a firm and move and, yeah, I'm trying to...
Are they...
Not only is it the police chief, but the city manager is tied to this, so I'm trying to move forward.
Right, I understand that. Is the firm taking, going through the nine and leveling it down to three or four?
No, it's nine, it's nine firms.
Nine firms.
We haven't, we haven't selected the firm.
Oh, okay, that's...
What, staff is going to...
I can't hear very good today.
Okay, yeah.
But that's what we need to do then.
Yeah, yep, so that's that. And then you could look down on the measures taken in the police department and what they're going to be doing as well, but this definitely has, you know, council needs to be aware of what they deal with out there. I know you watch it on TV, but as stated, you see it in real life, it's eye-opening.
Do you need to take your side off?
No, you don't.
Yeah, that's what they want.
Stay in the car, not get out of the car.
Let me in, this officer. That's what kids say.
I got this.
Here we go. The next one. A city council task force will provide changes to the ordinance to define and clarify board and advisory commission roles and responsibilities so that work is aligned with city council's priorities. So by quarter three, quarter four, we're going to require the lodging tax board to develop and submit an annual plan. And they've been notified and they're working through it, so they will be putting together the plan. City will establish a committee to review the board's annual proposal to ensure it conforms with the ordinances. When the proposal is approved, it will be included in the city's proposed budget provided to council for their consideration in quarter four of each year. So there an advisory board. One of the big things is the ordinance governing all city boards will include language that explicitly states that the board will not be recipients of the funds. They, they are city funds and they advise the city. So that's huge, because there for a while, boards were getting funding and they were, it was hard for staff to wrangle them in because they weren't following procurement procedures, they were ordering things without, you know, they were placing one place pianos and benches and without city knowledge. And so we're trying to rein that in. Then we're going to align advisory boards to specific departments, that way we can kind of control that. And you could go down, one of the big ones is, and this makes sense when it was explained to me, but the city advisory boards will not have a council member as a representative. Part of the reason I'm told of that, and it makes sense, is like, if you're an advisory to this board and then they bring something to city council, you really should recuse yourself because you were in ahead of everybody in the advisory role, so...
Become an echo chamber.
Right, yeah. So we're going to move toward, I don't know what the right word is, asking city council to step away from advisory and having departments be part of that.
That's a good idea. But that, that won't be the case for, say, ARPA.
No, ARPA, by agreement, the golf course has Aaron, Councilwoman Ogletree goes, sorry. It's a work session, right? I can just say Aaron.
No, I'd like you to say Esquire.
Make sure you put Esquire where it belongs. It's part of their agreement, but their agreement is expiring...
Right.
The end of this year, so that's another fire that's kind of hot that I've got to move on to kind of see where we're going on that. So that one, Arts and Culture has one, each other ones.
Now, I noticed, yeah, combined Parks and Rec, Urban Forestry and Arts and Culture...
Tourist Park.
Under Parks and Rec.
Right.
I, that, I'm not sure how that fits quite there, but I don't know if there's another where, place that it could be, maybe with Main Street. Because what they, all Arts and Culture does now is purchases public art and then works with the staff about its placement, that's it, period. So they don't really have much to do with, well, unless the art is in a park.
Right.
So, I don't know.
So that's, that's something that I just had to bring to your attention that you, you adopted this and it says that on...
I brought it up at the meeting. I said, I'm not really sure about that that is the right place for that.
Nice.
I remember that.
No, I die on, but it's...
It probably, it probably is a case of it's the best of any option, because where else, you're not going to put it under the electrical department, the water department.
Yeah, I guess.
You're right.
I guess.
So...
Well, I think because we had developed the Parks and Rec and the community, we renamed that Community Enrichment?
Yes.
I think that's when, maybe when that set, it might go that direction.
Yeah.
Correct.
Oop, I have a lot of typos in here.
So, and since I wasn't part, I don't know if staff that was part, you have any, anything to add that... Do you want to?
Um, no, not necessarily. Obviously, the combining of the boards will require new ordinance and some re-establishment there. But aside from that, no, I think council, might be easier if council steps forward and contacts the police department to do those ride-alongs instead of relying on...
I've actually been talking about it, Williams, from Maine, so I'll get it done.
I would urge you to do like a Saturday evening, something along those lines.
In full, make sure... What'd you say earlier?
We could get you to do high-speed chase, it's like...
Saturday, beer night.
Make sure it's a full move.
Right?
That's when it all happens.
I, this is really awkward talking with y'all.
I'm sorry.
The, the thing about city council people not attending their meetings or being their liaison, I think is fine as long as there is dedicated staff that's there to guide them, because a lot of what I do in Arts and Culture and what I have been doing with them is just keeping their focus on what they're there to do. And without somebody there doing that, it's very easy for boards to get off on some other tangent. And you've got to rein them in. And maybe I'm performing more of a staff role than a city council role in that regard, but somebody's got to do it.
Somebody's got to, yes, I agree. And that's, that's part of it, so we'll, we'll work through that from the staff. We were a little concerned that there would be more pushback from council and that was kind of the... Everybody's like, okay. Those of us that were part of the, that group were like, oh boy, it's like Marv, are you going to be there? And Marv was like, what did we tell council that they're not going to? And Marv was like, hell, I think he said yes. But then, but anyway, it's just like, oh boy.
I mean, it does, I see the logic in it.
It makes sense.
It does.
It really does.
But to Mayor's point, I mean, really there will have to be that guiding, driving force to keep it. I mean, some, some boards aren't going to have that detour like in my experience. I can't relate to that very well because the boards that I'm on by and large are, have specific directives and are operated very professionally. I'm not inferring that that is...
No, it just varies wildly who's on that board. And also someone needs to be there to keep us apprised that there are problems that are developing on boards as we have seen they, they happen.
What I envision is every two months, every quarter, every, the boards will have to come before council and give an update. Because right now, you kind of give a council update and sometimes it's like, well, they didn't have any meetings and we don't have any, and if we let them, maybe they'll take more ownership, you know?
I agree.
And come and report to you rather than you having to carry forward their report.
And I think we ought to set up a schedule for them to do it too.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if you just tell them to come, they're going to come when you want. But if we set up something, you know, and space it out, then we can have one board a night instead of having three or four at a time.
Right, right.
So that makes it a lot more sense.
I think it's more manageable once you combine the boards and you have fewer boards, because right now you have over 70 volunteers spread out over these boards. And that, it's a lot. It's, it's you're managing another group of 70 people trying to keep their terms straight and keep them in line with open records and open meetings laws. So combining, tearing it down a little bit, I think is going to make a big difference in that.
Well, and I believe that was the conversation during the strategic planning when we, when we all sat down. We kind of actually had went through and kind of broke it down to a new structure and to be able to sit down and actually give them full defined roles. What would they do? When would they report? If we would have goals set, all of that, and just kind of truly define it as a true guide.
Yeah.
And I think that's, and I think that's that 11-1125, just to have that work session and sit down and say, you know, which one, each one has a defined role and cohesiveness across all of them.
And to look at our ordinances and to work with the city attorney about, I mean, there, there should be one set of rules that has to do with work discipline and order. It doesn't have to vary from board to board. And it does, and there's some that have it all laid out, some don't have anything. So it should, here's how board and commission things should work. They're governed by Robert's rules, you know, blah, 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 blah. And then you can focus on what, in each one of the sections, on what that board is supposed to be about.
It's a very good idea.
This is your task.
Well, Manny and I, actually Manny and I agrees that we would work together on that. So if you want us to do that, we will be happy to do that.
Nice, that'd be wonderful.
Okay.
And one of you has Esquire associated with you. Swiss law.
I've got the great lab partner.
You totally did. That's funny. She's going to do all of it.
I'll be lifting.
That's right.
I can order pizza, I'm good at that. Chinese.
So, talk about this format, because I think, I think we probably need to rearrange tables into a circular time.
I was actually going to, yeah, I was going to ask for any input on format of this work session, but...
Part of it is, rather than have you, it feels like you against us, you know, you up there on this data, and it's a work session, we want to work.
I, I think, I talked to Audra about this a while ago, that I think it would be great if we, if the typical format was that, like during COVID, we sat in council chambers around in a circle and, because it should be more conversational, we're trying to do work, we're not, you know, we're not making decisions, we're trying to, it should be an easy back and forth. And that's easier if you're, everyone's at the same level.
I know we kind of had to change the venue just because, but...
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This is going to sound petty and picky, but I think maybe if we make the table grid, yeah, shorter and just one wider, then we'll have more spots around and we'll all be in this space here. No, no, like two by three deep.
Right.
And then it'll accommodate everybody and, and allow for like more face-to-face.
Why, you don't want to see they're looking at me, or what?
No, I always, Councilman Chu, I always appreciate your input. But I do like the conversational tone a lot.
But in council chambers, or are you thinking here in the future?
Either way.
Either way, really, but I mean...
I like it here, it's brighter, it's, I don't know, it's just, it's a little bit more laid back, it doesn't feel so formal.
Air conditioning.
Air conditioning works like a boss.
And then we can be super formal as city council.
Okay, that's not where we're going.
I don't know. I just, I like this setting.
It really is. I think so.
I mean, it was kind of pretty quick that we did this, and I was, I'll take fault for this. I was supposed to announce at the last meeting during my report that this was happening in the...
Instead, I was still worrying about what time.
Dean, check that off when I have my annual.
You better number year long enough for that.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, is there any more on this topic, or are we, I think we...
Just council needed to know that what their title was.
Does this look, okay, so you video up for me?
Why, on this subject? Okay, sorry.
I'm just kidding. I think we've completed our agenda, right?
We have. Can you talk about the upcoming?
Ah, I don't, I don't really...
So, we're having that work session for the capital construction with Cheryl? Whenever we having that?
The budget?
Yeah, wait, no, with our capital construction and everything.
Well, I gotta, like, I gotta get back to our next staff meeting to see where we're at with all of these projects and what's, what's in the works, and Cheryl will have to pull together budgets.
So, we're looking at, probably next month?
I don't know if it'll be two weeks, but more sooner than later, because we're in budget season.
Well, that's why I say with one of the...
I'm meeting with department heads now on their budgets, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah, all right.
Sounds great.
And just as an aside, if you don't mind. Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, sir.
There was also, I don't know if there was discussion in city council, but Steve left a schedule of fees for parks, for city uses, for everything, and that'll be on a work session upcoming. He kind of took, took down a bunch of fees and compiled them, so we will have to, that'll be on a work session as well to...
And also, we were working on permits for the parks. Is that in there, too?
I believe it is.
Have we decided what we're going to do on that?
Well, we're going to have to have a discussion, and we're going to have, it's, it's an ordinance now, so we're going to have to move on that.
Is, by any chance, on that schedule of fees, landfill fees on there, by chance?
Uh, I don't think it's like anything to do with tipping fees or water rates or gas fees. This is...
But as a point of order, if we don't, we're off-topic of the agenda.
Yep.
We used to have future discussion items, but I think you're absolutely correct. It's not.
Then we could discuss putting future agenda items on the, on future agendas.
Good retort, worthy of...
Gotcha.
Okay. I do like, unless there's objections, that will mark the end of this meeting.
Thank you.
Hearing that, it's over.